We will go ahead and call our regular meeting to order. We did begin with a work session at 6:00 PM to talk about the 2023-24 audit. At this time, we do have Mr. Wilford who is remote. Guy, could you state where you are and the reason that you would like to participate electronically?
All right, I'm at my home here in Radford, and I'm under the weather, so that's why I wish to participate.
Well, we're sorry you're sick, but do we have a motion to allow Guy Wilford to participate electronically? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Guy, I've got you on there, and we will go on and get started. We always like to begin with our pledge of allegiance, so I see Gary Harris is joining us this evening. If you'll come on down and lead us in the pledge.
Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated and please join us in a moment of silence where you can use that to prepare for the meeting, for personal reflection, or for silent prayer. Thank you very much. Council members, you all have the minutes from the February 10th meeting. Are there any changes, or do we have a motion to approve as submitted? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. We'll ask that you come down to the podium, use the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. The floor is now open. Seeing no one make a mad dash, we will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. And as of right now, I need to ask Chief Holdaway to come on down front. He's got someone special to introduce to us today.
Well, I guess first of all, I owe you guys an apology and Keely an apology. Keely's actually been with us for about a year, but between the academy and field training and me not getting it on the agenda, tonight's the first time I've had an opportunity to get Keely here. And so, the thing that I guess, you know, good things come to those who wait, and this is Keely, exactly how we can frame it for her. Keely comes with us with an extensive background in the Department of Corrections, and when you hire somebody, you never know what you're going to get. We put them through all kinds of rigors and testing and evaluations, and after that's done, it doesn't even necessarily mean that they will graduate from the academy. But with Keely, it was never a question. Keely's never going to tell you this, but she graduated third in her class. And it's been some time since we've had anybody from Radford PD graduate that high in the academy. So, guys, thank you for giving me a few minutes to come and talk to you about Keely, and Keely, thank you for choosing to come to Radford and work. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Keely, welcome to Radford. We're glad to have you. And it is fabulous to have other members of our PD here. Thank you all so much for all you do to help keep us safe and keep this community strong. We do appreciate you. Okay, moving on to old business council members. We are looking at a rezoning request for 901 Eighth Street. Braim Family Properties LLC applied for rezoning on the property known as 901 Eighth Street. And the request is rezoned from a portion of R3 Single Family Residential to B1 Limited Business and a portion from B1 Limited Business to R3 Single Family Residential. We did have a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission at our meeting on February 10th, and then Seth, I understand Planning Commission met on the 19th. Do you want to share anything from that meeting?
No, I think everyone on Planning Commission was excited about the possibilities and to see an old structure breed new, someone to breed new life in it. So, I think everyone was happy to see this, to approve this.
Fantastic. Anything else we need to know before we vote?
Don't think so.
Okay. We have two things we need to do, council. We need to make a motion to receive the recommendation from Planning Commission. Do we have a motion to do so?
Don't move.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Okay. And then we also need to vote on whether or not we're going to approve ordinance 1812. Do we have a motion for ordinance 1812 to rezone these properties?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so? We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Guy. All right, council, that's good on that. Let's move to appropriation ordinance 1802.21. And I got to tell you, in a really tough time, having dealt with the hurricane, having dealt with budgetary issues here for our council, this really gladdened my heart a little bit as the Radford City Animal Control has received donations since Hurricane Helene for recovery efforts totaling $21,529. And that's amazing. That's incredible. The donation account will be used to offset the cost of cabinets and countertops at our refurbished facility, as well as negate the cost for pre-storm preparations. That's just so wonderful, and so many people have stepped up. We want to say thank you. Chief, do you have anything you want to say about where animal control is or anything regarding this money? I don't mean to rush you up here, but...
I think you hit the nail on the head. I couldn't be more excited. It's just a testament to Adele and what she means to our community to get $21,000 worth of donations, and it comes from private citizens to other companies and other animal control organizations. And this money is going exactly what the intentions were, and that's to put us back in a place where we can provide the same services that we provided before the storm. So, I'm excited. They started painting today. If the weathered last week had held off and we had not gotten the storm, we could have had a faster anticipation date of being ready. But as it looks right now, we're looking at March 15th to have everything up and going.
That sounds good. I think we have to have a ribbon cutting down there.
I agree so much. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, chief. So, council members, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 1802.21 in the amount of $21,529?
Don't move.
Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Aye. So, having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so? We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, it's a short, regular meeting, but we got a lot to talk about anyway. Mr. Meadows, what do you have for us this evening?
Here, I was going to say, you know, I'm almost wrapping up my second month as your interim city manager. The last two weeks have been pretty much all budget, all the time. Some of the other responsibilities of city manager have kind of had to wait on a few issues. We have been dealing with sickness in the office, and I know the community's dealing with it. Councilman Wilford, I hope you feel much better soon. We have, we've had several folks out, and that's, when you're as lean as the city is, when you have folks that are out with illness and sickness of family members, it slows things down a little bit. We were able to get the budget information out to our department directors today. That was a little later than we had anticipated, but I want to thank Calista. She's left, but I know they worked over the weekend to get things ready to get that sent out today. So, we got budget out today. That information is due back middle of next week. Once we have that, we'll start compiling where we are. One of the key things that I'll be spending significant time on are the revenues, especially with the general fund, looking at not only projections for this year and how we're faring. I know the treasurer, who is also under the weather, she had planned to be here tonight. I know she has reported on collections. I think that she's definitely in the 90-plus percentile on real estate and personal property. But we need to look at where we are, and we also need to make sure as we project the revenues going forward for fiscal year '26, that we are as accurate and fine-tune those as closely as we can. Because as we've shared on several occasions, I had a conversation with the department directors last week and told them that, you know, this was going to be a tough budget. We really needed to take a hard look at expenses and tighten our belts. And what I heard nearly from every person in that room is, Greg, that's what we've been doing the last couple of years, and our expenses are about as tight as we can get them. So, that being said, we're still going to look, but I think the issues are going to be, what, what do we need to do with the revenues? And if that is too bitter of a pill, then we've got to talk about what programs and projects that we can defer or delay to be able to cushion that into time. So, that's my focus pretty much, pretty much for the next couple of weeks. I'll try to do all the other city manager things that I need to do. Staff has been great. Department directors have been great. They are united as a team to make sure that we keep things moving forward in a positive direction. I appreciate the chief's, there you are, you were over there, now you're over there. The chief's comments about the animal control facility. I got out this afternoon, and Charlie Goins, who was here earlier, Charlie went over and met the Parks and Rec staff at 3:00, and so I had a little time after that. And I went, it was a beautiful day. I wanted to just get out and walk around for a while, but I rode around a few areas. The animal control facility is really coming along. I agree with the chief. If we'd had better weather, really over the last couple of weeks, we'd be further along. But mid-March, looks like that's coming along. You may not have seen a lot of recent activity down in the Bisset Park area. However, we do have a timeline. Jenny worked with our staff last week and put together a timeline, which is in my inbox, waiting to go to you guys when I can get to it. We do have a timeline set. We are being very aggressive with following up with FEMA on any expenses that we have, and we're going to make sure we stay on that. One of the things I think I mentioned when I mentioned that we had hired Charlie, Charlie has had experience with disaster recovery in Salem and in Roanoke and working with FEMA, so that's going to be a huge asset to help us bird dog those funds and make sure that we receive them. Trying to think if there's anything else. It's, it's been numbers all the time. Lot of good things going on. Thank, I am so thankful. I told several of the staff members today. I think this was the first pretty day that we've had since I've been here as the interim, because all the other days have either been raining, or windy, or cold, or some variation. But looking forward to spring, looking forward to all the good things to come that are, that are going to be part of our future here in Radford.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for all the hard work you're putting in on this. We're so appreciative that you're here and you're helping us. And I'll just say thank you to the staff for everybody doing what they're doing.
Couldn't do it without them.
Council, what do we have this evening? Kelly, what do you have for us?
So, welcome Keely to the team. I really, well, she's gone, but thank you, guys. I really appreciate you bringing on an exceptional new person to fill out our already amazing police department. And congratulations on finishing third in your class. That's a huge accomplishment. Congratulations to Adele and all of her hard team of workers at the shelter, raising that money little by little. And I see Jesse with a bracelet, and I also have a couple at my house. I mean, she did a phenomenal job. Her and her staff worked very hard to raise that money, and it's definitely well-deserved, and I know it will go to good use. Guy, I hope you feel better. Thank you for staying at home and not bringing that to us. Thanks to Calista for helping get audit materials together. I know that our, the financial audits that I complete at the bank, there's literally hundreds of items that you have to turn in for your items needed. And then there are, you know, five, 10, 15 rounds of follow-up questions and digging. And so, that's a huge undertaking for especially one person to do. So, I really commend you for doing that hard work. Welcome to Charlie, to our team. We really appreciate the experience that you're going to bring. I know Salem has had a very successful tournament portfolio, so I hope you can bring some of those ideas and skills to our team, as well as dealing with disaster recovery that Craig had mentioned. I think that's a huge asset. Other than that, that's about all I have. I'm just, I feel like we have, we have challenges ahead for sure. I know that everybody is spending a lot of time, Craig, you especially, and us as council, trying to look at everything and move forward. And, and you're absolutely right, it's not going to get changed in one budget season. But I feel like we are all very aggressively committed to, to turning this around as, as quickly and as efficiently as we can. It's not going to be painless. That's absolutely something that we can, we can confirm now, but I do think that it's possible. I've lived here all my life, and one thing that I can say that Radford is, is resilient. We are very, very strong, and we will definitely not go down quietly. We're going to rise above all of this, but we need to make sure that we stay together and be kind and resourceful and, and helpful to everyone during the process. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Jesse, what do you have?
I'm going to keep it brief. Other than to say, we do have some hard work ahead of us, but I know that this council is committed, and I know that times are tough in your households right now because when we're looking at all that inflation that's happening at the grocery store and, and other components of your world right now, but we simply are not bringing in the revenue that drives the city to provide the services that, that we need and require. We're going to be looking at a lot of different things. One is, obviously, we're going to have to raise revenue. There's no way around it. Just so you know, none of us are exempt from that, so we are raising them on ourselves too. So, none of us enjoy that, trust me. But we'll also look to see and make sure we're being good stewards to the money and the revenue that we are bringing in. You've heard several times, we run a tight ship. We're going to continue to run a tight ship. There may be some services that are extras that, that we've all enjoyed that we might have to suspend temporarily. And if there are certain things that you really, really want to see continue, then certainly we would love to hear from you. We have the comments time. We'd love to know the things that really maybe are not as compromisable as what we might think up here. So, this really is a give and take. We want your input. We want to know how you're feeling, what, what things that perhaps we can scale back temporarily and what things are a must for you. So, anyway, we hope to hear more from you because we are stewards. We are just residents of the community too, so our perspective is very similar to yours, but everyone has a unique one. So, we're in this together. We are going to get past it. It's going to be a little painful. We're all going to be paying a little bit more, but hang in there. There is the other side to this.
Thank you, Jesse. Seth, what do you have?
I'll tie in and welcome all of our new people, and I was lucky enough to be in the hiring process with Charlie Goins, and he's going to be an excellent next rec director. Checks a lot of boxes, so I can't, can't wait to get started with him. He, welcome and glad, glad to have him. And then, you know, I'll tie into what it's on everyone's mind. I mean, the audit, I mean, you can't escape it. You have to accept it, and you have to take action. And, you know, the sense of urgency is felt among all of us. It has to be felt. It has to be addressed. We have to stabilize and, and stop the bleeding and look at how we want to do things in the future. And I think we've all kind of touched on it. There's going to be some, some rate increases. I, it'd be nice if we did have some reserves to cushion that, and so, you know, we don't. And I just, we can't put a huge, huge burden strictly on the, on the shoulders of our citizens. So, delegating that out and, you know, pausing services that maybe we can come back to later, or really going to have to, you know, look at some wants and needs. And it's going to be no easy decisions, but it has to be done. Has to be done. And I know we'll rely heavily on staff to help us get some of these numbers and appreciate all the work. I know you guys have put in a ton of hours and, and more to come. But just want to, you know, tell the citizens that there's nothing more on our forefront of our minds and that working, working hard to make sure that, that everybody in this process is, is thought of equally. And we'll, we'll tackle it. We got a long couple of months ahead of us, but we'll get there, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Seth. Guy, do you have anything you want to share with us this evening?
I think I'll pass.
Okay. Feel better. We hope you, you get out from under this pretty quick and can join us. And to that point, I did mention in our work session that we were going to try to have another work session on Wednesday. It doesn't look like that's going to work out for everybody, so we will just move that to next Monday, if that's acceptable for everybody. We have requirements to put that out there. So, Monday, March the 3rd at 6:00, or do we want to go earlier? Or do we want to try for 5:30? What do you all want to do? Let's go for 5:30. That gives us a little more time. Guy, does that work for you?
Yes. Now, my wife came in, so we're not doing it this Wednesday?
This Wednesday's not going to work for a couple of reasons, so we'll need to move it to next Monday.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Jenny, will you get that advertised for us? Thank you. And I, I will tell you this, you know, this is an evolving situation, obviously. I think all of us have asked these questions for many years and have, have worked on budget pretty much 12 months out of the year for the last four years. I mean, we have never stopped talking about where we are, what we're doing, what's happening, what do we need to do differently, how can we make the most of what we have? Are there things that we need to look at differently? And, and I'll point to many meetings over the last four years that we, we've talked through those things. The situation evolved a lot during the calendar year 2024 evidently, particularly the first half of the year. Some things that are not reflected in the audit, certainly we are eight months into a new budget year, but also we addressed some of the rate inbalances last spring as we did the budget. We'll see where that takes us. Again, this is one of the things we're trying to do, is pull together the numbers for exactly where we are today so that we know what starting point we're working from. The audit is a picture of six months ago, and we wanted to explain everything that we see in that, what it really tells us, and what it doesn't tell us yet. And one of the things it doesn't tell us is how this current year is going. And so, we've got to work through that, Mr. Meadows and his team, and everybody. We appreciate the treasurer. We appreciate Calista working on all this, trying to help us figure out exactly what things are looking like today. And then we'll figure out where we go from there. You know, I, I do want to put some things into perspective, you know. It's certainly challenging because it's a change from where we have been, but it is also not insurmountable. And, you know, Kelly mentioned this. Everybody's mentioned this. The city is very resilient, and we've had our challenges before when the foundry closed. That was a huge challenge. We've had challenges throughout the years with many issues in our community, whether it be a natural disaster, or change in business environment, or whatever that situation may be. But I do know that we have the strongest asset that we need, and that's all of our people in this community, and that together we are going to be able to overcome this. I hope that you'll come to our work sessions. Virtually is fine, but please come to this room and talk with us. If there are ideas that we're missing to be able to generate more revenue, if there are ideas that we're missing that will bring in money to help us support some of the activities of the community that we don't see, help us. We don't claim to be the, the sole proprietor of the knowledge for this, for all of this. And so, come to this meeting and share those ideas. We understand we're going to have to make some adjustments to some of the things that we offer, but we also value the things that we have in this community. And I think we'll find a way to balance everything so that we're not overburdening any one area. We're not taking away and causing detriment to too many people as best we can. And as Mr. Meadows has stated, and as Corbin stated, this is something that's going to probably take us two or maybe three budget cycles to completely work through. So, it won't be a one-year, all this revenue comes in, or all these expenses are cut. We have to adjust through that as we move and, and go from there. I'll just speak for myself, but I feel this is the sentiment of council. We're dedicated to figuring this out. We're going to spend the time and energy, just as we have, to try to work through this and to make sure that what decisions we make are in the best interest of the citizens and the city of Radford's future. I think we've got a wonderful community here that continues to grow and thrive. I will take away a couple positives, you know. People are moving to Radford. Radford is the place they want to be. It is because it's a little less expensive than some neighbors in some respects, but it's bigger than that. It's all the things that we have here. It's all the people that we have here. It's the quality of life that we have here, and we will sustain that and grow that and move it forward as a community. So, better days are in our future. This is a real challenging evening. This has been a challenging period. It's going to be tough, but better days are in the future, and we are going to move forward together. And so, with that, I'll quit talking, and we will go on. We do need to go into a... And so with that, I'll quit talking, and we will go on. We do need to go into a closed session as a council for a few minutes to talk about personnel. I'm going to ask Seth if he will take us into closed session, so we can talk personnel for just a few minutes, and then we'll come back. But you all are welcome to stay outside the, the space, but we're going to have to move on for just a second right now. So, Seth, will you take us into closed session?
I'd like to make a motion to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you, Seth. We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will move into closed session. Thank you all very much.